Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Wallingford Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission to Order. The date is October 4th, 2023. The time is 7:09. Please join me in a pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Ally?
Isley McKean.
Nick Kern.
Jim Vitale.
Deborah Phillips.
Michael Carusa.
Jeffrey Nekio.
Jim Heilmann.
Aaron O'Hare, environmental planner.
Okay, consideration of the minutes, the regular meeting of September 6th was canceled, so we have minutes of a special meeting of September 7th, 2023. Any comments regarding the minutes? Any corrections? Not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the minutes of the special meeting on September 7th, 2023 be accepted as submitted.
Okay. Under All Business Application. I didn't call for a vote. Did I forget to call for a vote? Yeah. Okay, was there a second to the?
A second.
Jeff, the second. Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Mike?
Stan.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes, sorry about that. Thank you. Under All Business Application A18-12.232 Barnes Road, Roland Industries, request for bond release.
Not, not ready, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we're gonna save item two for a little bit later. Item three, Application A23-8.3, 531 North Branford Road, Ferguson Woods. This is a town-owned, open-space woodland and recreation department is installing a bog bridge installation. Erin's report is pretty explicit, simple, nice construction, native lumber, native material. Her recommendations is to approve it as submitted. I have a motion to that effect? Unless there's any questions. There's any questions regarding this bog bridge? This is the application, you're correct. Alright, I'll entertain a motion regarding significant activity of this project.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that Application A23-8.3, 531 North Branford Road, Ferguson Woods, Kenny Michaels, Director Parks and Recreation, bog bridge installation be declared not a significant impact activity.
Your second?
My second.
Any discussion? Motion made in the second, any discussion? Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. I wanna handle this other item that surfaced late today. Erin just passed it out regarding the dog park.
If I may say, that's, that is under F, I'm sorry, G reports. It's a report. It's not an application. It's under-
Just a report?
Under G reports.
Yeah, but they, they want an action on it, though. Doesn't the town want an action on it?
Um, they, they want a determination whether or not they need to apply, but, but what they want immediately is permission for tomorrow for the contractor to put in some erosion controls, because the contractor already did some work, and there's rain coming Friday, so he wanted to just to make sure what he did already, just to get some erosion controls, not to do any more work until it's, it's all copacetic.
Well, I, I thought they wanted either administration approval or come in under the form of maintenance. Has that changed?
No, you could, yes, you could. Let me explain.
Yes or no?
What's the question? Again, can you repeat the question?
Question is, has that changed, other than they wanted administration approval for their, what they're doing, or classify it as maintenance?
Correct. They didn't-
Which is it?
But there's no discreet application in front of you. That's, don't think I forgot it. It's just not in front of you, but yes. Yes, they are seeking administrative approval, if you're so inclined. I have photographs. They're seeking to remove, oh, I don't know, they did, there's ten trees, small trees, and a few, oh, gosh, I didn't count them, maybe ten big trees coming down, maybe five big trees, a few more, on either side of the dam. And the whole purpose is, they are required, every ten years, anyone who has a dam is required to do a dam safety inspection report. So, the town of Wallingford did that report for the DEP, and the DEP found that they needed some, some work. The dam needed work in terms of, they don't want roots getting in there, and for the integrity of the concrete structure, and they also don't want branches and trees falling directly on the dam. So, they're gonna clear just around the two ends of the dam, on either side, on the fishway side and the dog park side, twenty-five feet back from the concrete abutments of the dam.
Okay, so what are we doing here tonight with this?
Well, I thought that it was interest to the Wetland Commission, but yes, it, it would be a candidate for administrative approval, because they're not going in wetlands, per se. And they are, they clarified today, they are not, at first, the contractor told me he was gonna stump the trees, meaning, you know, extract down the roots. No, it's just to grind the stumps. So that's much less invasive, if they just grind the stumps down a foot, and fill it in with dirt, and then plant conservation seed mix, which over time, the native plants will come in on the bank.
So, we're, we are approving the town engineers' plan that they designed for this project?
Would you like the pictures?
Not really. I'm trying to figure out if there's, there's, there's no application as such, is there?
No, but then, you know, tomorrow, you know, administrative approval can be done anytime, unlike the regular applications that have to be done at this meeting. Administrative approval is done by the chairman, not by me, but by the chairman, and it can be done anytime, and applicants are encouraged to-
Well, but they're, they're in the process of doing this work right now.
Yes, I-
Now, and you want us to say it's okay for the contractor to continue the work?
It's on pause. I paused it yesterday, just to clarify some things, which was clarified today, we went out there today, and to get it in front of you and everybody to see, particularly you, Mr. Chairman, to see if, if you would like to give it administrative approval. That would be a good thing, because then they could proceed with it. Yes.
Okay. And what am I giving administrative approval to?
Um, to that page, the drawing. Do you have the drawing in front of you? So it says, I think it says on there, with the black curves, it, they don't count the trees, but it's any trees within twenty-five feet of those black curves, on either side of the dam.
Okay. Alright, commissioners, any concerns?
No, I would say it's maintenance, to protect the dam, and I think administrative approval is appropriate, because they're not really doing anything except making sure it's fully kept.
Jeff?
Agree with Jim.
Mike?
I agree.
Deb?
I agree.
Jimmy? Nick?
I agree.
I'm in trouble tonight. Ally?
No comments?
Yes? Do you agree? Okay. Alright.
Could you recap what the agreement was? I missed what it was. Was it?
Well, we're agreeing that the, we're agreeing that the work within twenty-five feet, semi, semicircle or a half circle of the dam, to be maintained of trees that were endangering the dam.
Okay, so it's maintenance. It's a maintenance activity?
Maintenance activity.
Okay, good. And I'm working with them on erosion control, so I think it should be fine. Alright, thank you.
Would have been, such things would have been nice to notify us, that's all. Okay. Alright. We didn't vote on the application. Boy, I'm, I'm in trouble tonight. Debbie just brought up that the, the North Branford Road, we voted on significant activity, but we didn't vote on the application itself. We didn't approve the application. So, are you, you're making a motion?
Yep. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that Application A23-8.3, 531 North Branford Road, Ferguson Woods, Kenny Michaels, Director Parks and Rec, bog bridge installation be approved as submitted.
Second?
Second.
Motion made in the second, any discussion? Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. Alright.
Another matter, if I could bring it to your attention, is that under receipt of new applications, obviously, you're gonna receive them, but number two on there, I could have, I'm sorry, number one under there, 86 Barnes Road, I could have put that under new business, maybe I, it goes, maybe I should have put under new business. What that is, is, we can talk about it now if you'd like, it's briefly, it's, it's short. What it is, is they want a change to the permit term of what you approved, like in June, okay? What, there were maybe seven conditions of approval. The one they wanna change is the wetland restoration plan, and David Lloyd came in with a wonderful report, restoration planting plan. They want it delayed. It's supposed to be in by November 1st of the year they start work on their storage unit facility. Well, they're saying David Lloyd can't get those plants in, ordered and in by November 1st, but they, they really wanna start this work on their site. So, what they're asking the commission to do on that one condition, is instead of getting the planting plan all done by November 1st, to get it all done by spring of 2024.
Okay, now, what is, what's necessary in this permit modification? Is it an actual application, or can we vote on it tonight?
Technically, it's an application, because it's in the fee schedule as one of the things that you pay a hundred and ten dollars to change, but really, there's no plan to review
We can act on it tonight.
That's what I'm saying, really, if you understand the condition that's trying to be modified, and if you agree with it, which I'm recommending, it doesn't make that much difference, if they put the plants in before November 1st, or if they put them before, and you could say before June 10th or something, June 15th.
Okay, then, but, but it is an application.
We approved it in June, yes.
Oh, no, this, this modification, is this an application?
Actually, he didn't, well, he didn't wanna go back and type a letter, so I said, just put it on this application form. But yes, we record it as an application.
Does this need a significant activity vote?
No, 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 no. That's why it's really a business matter. It doesn't need a significant activity vote.
So, I'll, any discussion on this request? Change the date from this November to the year they start the project? Then I'll entertain a motion regarding this.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that Application A23-9.186 Barnes Road, 950 North Main Street Extension, the modification to permit terms, to change the condition number one, relative to the restoration planting, for the plants to go in before June 1st of the year that they start work. Well, they're gonna start this year, so could you make it 20? I amend that, that with the site work starting October 2023, the plants will go in before June 1st of 2024.
Sounds good.
There's a motion made, is the second?
Second.
Motion made in the second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Alright. Let's, let's go to item two under All Business, Application A23-5.510 Mansion Road. Oh, me, Boston Final Ventures. Okay, now, I understand, is there a intervenor tonight here? Is there, is the person who wrote the report here gonna make a presentation? Do they wanna sit at the, that desk to be part? Okay. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For your record, again, my name is Dennis Sennaviva. I'm an attorney with the Sennaviva Law Firm, 721 Broad Street. And Meredith, to my left, is our soil scientist, George Logan, who presented to you last month, and is here tonight certainly to respond to any questions you might have. Just by way of summary, Mr. Chairman, to sort of go back to where we were and where we are tonight, as you note from the approval of your minutes of the September 7th meeting, we made a fairly lengthy presentation. There was some presentation by the intervenor during the course of the meeting. I know there had been discussions to whether or not the drainage ditch along the northern edge of the property was a drainage ditch or intermittent water course. That discussion took some time. On page seven of, of the minutes that you just approved, Ms. O'Hare, the environmental planner, said, indicates, I'm not saying it's an intermittent water course. I don't really care if it's an intermittent water course, it can be, it's a ditch. It's a ditch, it's a ditch, because it has, as I explained in my environmental planner's report, and I also concurred with Commissioner Heilmann, maybe things change. So, that issue came before you, and then based upon that representation and the presentation made by the applicant, Commissioner Kern made a motion to deem this particular activity, those activities contemplated by this application not to be a significant activity, and that was approved by this commission. So I think the direction that you gave us was pretty clear. I know there was some trepidation, I don't think it was anger, but there was some concern about the fact that you were getting reports at the last minute, there wasn't a lot of information that, that you, that you had time to review that was new, things were being passed in at the last minute. And so I think Commissioner Kern probably said it best, that you wanted to make sure that everything was sort of ironed out before we came back this month. And so one of the things that has occurred is that there's been an awful lot of involvement, discussion with your planner, and I think that she has, with your environmental planner, that she has, in fact, put together some communications that have been faxed to my office, and the most important of which, I think, is that she put together eleven suggested conditions of approval. And, so that, you know, I'm sure you have, that's part of the package that you received. And my client, after reviewing them, agreed to those conditions. After we agreed to the eleven, there was another communication that there was a twelfth added condition of approval, and we agreed to that condition of approval. So, in terms of, you know, you've already voted on whether or not it's a significant activity, and deemed it not to be. You know, typically, I don't mean to be presumptuous, but typically, your next step is to consider the, all the information that was provided, and you have the list of recommended conditions of approval, there is no objection from the applicant as to that list. So that's where the applicant is. We think the plan that has been modified since its original submission is a, is a good plan, one that does not cause any unreasonable impact, or certainly no pollution to your, to your water, air, or other natural features. I think that it's, it's, you've, and I think the other encouraging thing to this, Mr. Chairman, is that you've, I think most of you, if not all of you who are voting, have been out to the site, you've seen the site. So this is not something that we're talking to you, and you're looking at two-dimensional pictures or drawings, you've been to the site, and you, I'm sure you've made your own determinations based upon your years of experience as to whether or not this was a complicated matter, and the plan had some, some failing features. So, we're really at a point, Mr. Chairman, I know the intervenor has certain rights, and obviously, they need to be met, but in terms of where the applicant is, we've, we've met with your environmental planner, she was gracious enough to put together conditions of approval, we've agreed to those conditions, we communicated that by fax, hopefully, it'll be emailed someday, and, and we're ready to move forward.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
What?
Before they move forward, I, I think maybe it's a good time to go over the changes? We got a new plan with changes?
I don't think so. I mean, you, you've gone everything, unless the commissioners have questions, you've gone over this completely with the applicant.
Um, so we're not gonna talk about the changes since the September 7th meeting?
Commissioners, have they got questions? Any commissioners? Jeff?
No questions.
Mike?
No questions.
Deb?
No questions.
Jeff? Hey, Jim? Nick?
Where is the hard copy that I requested at the last meeting, that everything that need to be done was gonna be done in, in writing tonight? So we were gonna have something in front of us that we could approve or disapprove. You've got eleven conditions of approval. Are they on the hard copy print we were supposed to receive?
They, yes and no. They're at, what, what Attorney Sennaviva is referring to is found on page four and five, and, four and five of my environmental planner's report that went out in your packet on Friday.
So they're not on the print?
Oh, on the plans? On the actual site plans? No.
The problem last month was, we were scattered all over the parking lot with all different suggestions for what we could do, or shouldn't do, or wanna do, or maybe do. That's why we said, we stopped the meeting, and we said, this month, you'd have everything done and completed. So we had something in front of us to vote on.
Well, it's in the report.
So now we're voting on conditions of approval. They don't need to be on the print.
I, I'm sorry, I'm confused. You want Giuliani associates to put them on those, the sheets, the plan sheets?
Well, isn't that where they're gonna go eventually?
We never do that. I know other towns that do that. I've, I've seen that in other communities, yes. We could start doing that.
If you read the minutes, even in the minutes, it's very clear that Nick wanted everything on the print, stamped print, ready to approve in front of us. Now, they're all on this, on, on conditions of approval.
I don't know. Attorney Sennaviva, did you, were you on board with that? Did you think it was supposed to be on the plan? I, I missed that, I'm sorry.
To be candid, I, I thought that, with all due respect, I thought that the plan was to have something clear in front of you, obviously, so you're not, you know, scurrying around, looking at different maps and plans and filings. And what the planner provided was, you know, very, I thought fairly well-detailed conditions of approval, very specific. Some of them would, would probably go on a plan, I suspect. Some of them, like, for example, the bond, she proposes a bond of $20,000 relative to erosion control, that would more typically just be as part of your minutes, I suspect, you know, if you were to grant that. ENS inspections, erosion control blankets, again, we're happy to, to incorporate that all on the final set of plans, not knowing if this commission had anything new that it wanted to add after tonight's meeting. There was a condition of placing wetland placards on wooden posts, again, that may be a pretty standard, you know, condition that you, that the commissioners have put in, in place. So, I, I think, with all due respect, I think there is clarity on those conditions. They're not, and to be fair, they're not complicated. I mean, I think as we looked at them, I thought that the planner had done what you had asked, with all due respect. I think it's, it's pretty clear. Work to be done in the eastern ravine is scheduled to take place when a forecast of dry weather, I mean, I guess you could put that on the plan. Sequencing of the eastern ravine work, which was important, I think that's certainly, can be put on the final set of plans. She talked about some soil borings in the vicinity of the eastern ravine, and all of that was located towards that eastern ravine as opposed to, and there, as opposed to things of, of, towards the northern side. I, I think, you know, we're good. We're good with the proposals that have been submitted. I know the intervenor wanted to provide some additional information. We just recently received the revised intervenor's complaint, and the submission by one of their experts. We have brought tonight, in case this commission wanted to, had any questions from that presentation, we brought in additional specialist to my left, Mr. McManus, who's prepared to address those, those issues if, if need be. But I just wanted to point out to the commission that we were at least pleased with the fact that we had a very defined set of conditions, and that we had acknowledged to your planner that we're prepared to go forward with them.
So what, out of what you'd, what should have been on the plans for Dick's request?
You know, it's, I mean, that probably is an engineer's question, but I would say, you know, sort of the notes that you see in the corner, normally on that first face sheet, or the signature page, they usually have a set of notes. I would think probably information that would be there for the construction team to look at, to understand. So in that, any construction sequence, they would know to do work when there was a dry forecast, any work in that eastern ravine area. The sequencing of, of work, again, that could be put on a, a plan set, and I'm, you know, that really is a question for Mr. Giuliani, but I'm happy to give my best. Erosion control blankets, I suspect that that is something that is in your approvals normally. I mean, you have a list of your conditions, and that is provided to a contractor. The contractor is in the audience if this is approved. Monitoring of, of erosion sediment control controls, I'm not so sure that you see that, you know, on the plans, that's pretty standard fare. I mean, a lot of them were standard. There had to be a full assortment of, of erosion sediment control measures, had to be stored on-site, and I'm sure that your environmental planner- And I'm sure that your environmental planner, if not members of the commission, will be there to make sure that that occurs. We've named a responsible party in case there's any questions. If Erin has to call someone, we have that available for her. So, I mean, a lot of it was the standard fare that you would see in your approvals. Placards, bond, and sequence of construction. I'd like to think that even though it's not on a set of plans, that it's well defined and can be incorporated by just taking that information here and putting it on a set or a face page.
So would you say that the plan is incomplete then?
I wouldn't think so, not the plan. These are just the conditions of approval. You may choose to change them, Commissioner. What if, I mean, if we put them on there and then you said, "No, no, no, we don't like number four." Then we've got to change the plan again. So I think it's probably, you know, with all due respect, I think it would be appropriate if this commission deemed it prudent to approve the plan with these conditions of approval, we'd put all 12 on there. But, you know, you've had a chance, they're in your packet. If you said, "I don't think number four is fair," even if we've agreed to it, you might encourage the commission to delete it. And I'm just picking a number, it's not specifically number four. So, you know, we'd be crossing them out on the plans, making them less, you know, less communicative. So that's, I think the plans themselves, the plans on how to move forward are all done. These are just the conditions of approval that are being recommended by your staff. And we're accepting those conditions.
May I say something, Mr. Chairman? I, I'm thinking about it. And now I understand what Nick was saying. We did do that with the five research parkway. We did. Now I know what you were saying. You didn't mean it just paste it on there. You mean each one where it went on the specific plan, right? Like, not just, not just take this and paste it on or incorporate it, but you meant that it's all on there. Everything, every change that was ever made is recorded somewhere appropriately on that plan.
I asked you to do your job, which you were hired to do, to give us a set of prints to review before the night of the meeting so we could yay or nay the application. Now you've come up with a list of things that you think that should be on there or we want to see. You didn't, you did, really you didn't do anything. You just put it on the file. You wrote up 11 things that were important to you that aren't on the print. I don't know if they're important things or not. I asked you to make sure the complete, the applications prints were complete. Because Christopher stood up here and thrashed back and forth about, "Well, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. Maybe we're going to do this and maybe we're going to do that." We're not here to listen to all the maybes. You should have had something solid for us to review and say yes or no.
I think the zone change reversal that happened last week really put, perhaps put the team at, in a different frame of mind. They didn't call me back. We did, I requested a meeting after, you know, last week and no meeting came, no calls were returned until Friday at 4:40. So, no, I think, and Mr. Giuliano handed in his revised plans, but that was what he wanted to do.
So then basically we should table this until the zoning thing is a gade or nade or they've straightened the zoning?
Now, that's, actually that's irrelevant, the zoning.
They're out of time tonight, so this is...
And zoning's irrelevant to wetlands.
So nothing's going to change in wetlands? And the construction of the site or modification or any of that stuff's not going to change?
Well, the plan is to go forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission and seek the zone change again. The technicality was that somehow the map, when you file a petition for a zone change, you file a petition and a map. 16 copies of them. One of the maps, for whatever reason, didn't make it from the planner's office to the town clerk. So that's fatal. And that's actually with the statute. So that's, that's the reason that Attorney Small has opined that the zone change was not, was void, not voidable. The notice provision to neighbors, that, that's been resolved, I think to my satisfaction and to hers. But, so the zone change is not, is void. It did not occur legally. But that doesn't affect the wetlands application because you're not concerned about zone. You're concerned about what potential plans, what their impact potentially can be on wetlands. We're coming back. I've already talked to Planner Pajini. We're going to be coming back very quickly next month, hopefully with the zone change application and with the identical, identical site plan. We don't want your effort, all of our time and effort to be wasted. We're going to be coming back with exactly the same.
So what you've presented us is what's going to be presented to the planning and zoning? And this is what the footprint's going to be for construction?
Yeah, the owner is right behind me. The answer is yes, but that's, that's what we're submitting. Now, if they, as I suppose it's a legal matter, if for some reason the Planning and Zoning Commission did not approve the zone change, I'm not sure why they would have approved it and then changed their mind, you know, a couple of months later because a map didn't make it to the town clerk's office. But that would be the only, only way that this plan would change is if the zone was not changed. But again, I think that's a fairly simple matter.
Okay. What were we, what were we going on? Have you said we had any questions about the new plan? There was any questions on the new plan? Ally?
I don't have any questions.
Caroline? And did I ask you, Jim?
Is there a possibility at some point we could just review the construction sequence that they've proposed here? Because there was some concerns in the literature that we got as to whether they should put in the lower dam, main dam first, or the check dams along the way before they start doing work. I'd like to just go over that because I think that's a very important aspect, anything that takes place here.
Can you wait until Chris Giuliano shows up?
Oh, absolutely. I just wanted to know if that's going to be...
All right, we'll come, we'll come back to that. Okay. I think we'll get the intervenor in at this time.
Mr. Chairman, while they're getting ready, I just want to say that, what it says in my report is, these are to be, these, they never sat down with me on these, but number three, Attorney Santa Viva and Mr. Giuliano, they're not going to like number three. Because it differs from the sequence that Giuliano Associates is putting forward. So we're going to, they're going to, somebody's going to have to change condition number three unless they want to build it the way I want it. If they want to build it the way they want it, which is on Mr. Giuliano's plans...
Was number three a condition of approval?
Yeah, sequence of construction.
But they agreed to that?
My clients reviewed it, Mr. Giuliano's reviewed it. They all indicated...
So they agreed to number three?
And he's got to build it my way. I don't think he wants to do that. But, okay, build it my way.
The intervenor, please. Now, the rules, the rules are a set of rules for intervenor. It's got to deal with the environmental issues on this site. It's got to be, have specific issues, not general issues. And you can, you can ask the applicant questions and the applicant can review, can return the questions or return answers. It can be a conversation between you and the applicant. So if you'd like to, go ahead.
I'd like to, but I have no internet connection. Is your microphone working? Hello? Maybe put it closer and tap it. Okay. What do you think? Good? Good evening, I'm Sharon Petrillo. I live at 1064 Mansion Road. And on behalf of the nearly 300 members of the group Save Mansion Creek, I'm glad to have this opportunity to provide commission members with supplemental material to aid you in reaching a decision regarding the proposed project's potential impact on the upland review areas of the wetlands and watercourses of Ten Mansion Road. Tonight's presentation has three parts. The first part summarizes what town planners have said over the past 20 years about developing this property. The second discusses the geology of the site and what signifies for any development activities at Mansion. And finally, Michelle Ford will present her professional report, which you have in your packet. Map also in your packet shows Mansion Creek in blue. See? This is for people in the audience. Here's Mansion Creek. This is the intermittent stream. The 50-foot upland review areas are in solid yellow. And you'll see them here and here, as well as here. The dotted yellow, yellow upland review areas reflect the additional 50 feet owing to the steep slopes of the ravine. Likewise, the intermittent water course is in blue, which is running down here. Our little stream. The delineation there is partly based on field measured delineations and partly on observations made last month from the public rights of way. Proposed development activities of restaurant, parking lot, and other features are also shown. Where on this lot can you actually build? Building, a commercial building and parking lot? This office will oppose any requests for variances to build on this lot in the future. This was from July 30th, 2003, from Linda Bush, who was the town planner at the time. The next quote is from August 7th, 2003, again from Linda Bush, town planner. "It was the consensus of those in attendance that would be considered a water course rather than a drainage dish. This designation will have major impact on the developmental ability of this property." This map is from Mr. Petrus, Thomas Petrus, August 11th, 2003, and Kevin Stevens, soil scientist, attesting to the presence of both Mansion Creek and the intermittent water course, which is located right here. October 17th, 2005, from Erin O'Hare, environmental planner. "Drainage ditch, as depicted on the survey, is in reality a permanent water course stream at the bottom of a steep ravine that supports 100-year-old mature oak, hickory, and maple trees. The lot is not practicable to build." March 3rd, 2023, from Erin O'Hare, environmental planner. "The subject parcel and the existing DD40 parcel abiding support an extensive wetland system with a stream and steep ravine with a second water course. Why has the town consistently protected these wetlands, watercourses, and their upland review areas in the face of requests to develop the property? There are two main answers to this question. One has to do with geology and the other with soil and wetland science. Let's begin with geology. It's a pleasure to thank Randolph Steinman, professor emeritus of geology and geophysics at UConn, and Megan Seramit, Connecticut State Geologist, for helping us understand the rocks of Mansion Creek, which is location 137 on the middle of the map. So here is our area, right over here. On the middle left of the map, the 2021 Wallingford Quadrangle is one of the newest maps that the Department of Environmental Energy Preservation has published and was co-authored by Professor Steinman. The site basically sits beside Sleeping Giant's left foot. This is a detail of the 2021 quadrangle map. Ten Mansion is just above where it says 137, which is in this area, right over here. The blue streaks indicate the water drainage directions, which you can see the water here. And the blue dot marks where they took rock sample for analysis. What does all this mean for the development of Ten Mansion? We have to go way back in time to the formation of Sleeping Giant about 200 million years ago during the Jurassic period, the age of dinosaurs that left their tracks in Rocky Hill and elsewhere. The central valley of Connecticut was covered by sedimentary sandstone familiar to us as brownstone. As the Earth's supercontinents were breaking apart, on three occasions, hot magma pushed up through the sandstone and molten lava poured out. And these are examples of what happened when that pushed up. Its distinctive fractures and joints were made when the lava contracted and cooling. As you can see on the map, Sleeping Giant, East Rock and West Rock are all products of this powerful magma events eons ago. And right here is Sleeping Giant, our area. Scandinavian quarrymen named it Trap Rock from the Swedish word for stair because the rocks often look like huge steps, as you can see in this photo. For two major reasons, the geology of Trap Rock is very important for any wetlands, watercourses, and their upland review areas found among these outcrops. First, it is extremely hard, erosion resistant rock. In the thin section of the sample taken from our location 137, you can see how dense the interlocking mineral crystals are. And that's reflected in this photo here. First, it is an extremely hard, I'm sorry. You can see how dense the interlocking minerals are. This means that any surface waters from rain or snow will not be absorbed. Instead, they will flow down the rock steps following the principal fracture directions, filling the wetlands and watercourses in the very ancient ravines below and carrying with them any pollutants from human activity in their upland review areas. The second reason has to do with the glaciers of the last ice age. About 20,000 years ago, the glaciers began to retreat from Connecticut. On Sleeping Giant, they scraped away the fresh layers of standstone that had been deposited and scoured the hard trap rock, as you can see in this photo taken at Sleeping Giant. This is an example. And these are some of the streams from Sleeping Giant. They left behind a thin layer of glacial till, which here tends to be coarse textured soil and loamy sand. Of greatest importance is that they also left behind a tremendous amount of meltwater that eventually flowed deep into the fractures in the trap rock. As Nancy Sax wrote in her book on Sleeping Giant, "One cannot walk on the giant, even in the winter, without hearing the underground murmur of trickling water." To conclude this part of our presentation, let's return to the detail of the 2021 map. The igneous rock fractures run north and south. So many, any surface runoff and pollution from human activity will go right into Mansion Creek, which runs from east to west. This is somewhere on the giant, a souvenir of that long ago glacial melt. The same is true of the intermittent water course that joins it before the creek passes under South Turnpike Road. Its characteristics are typical of the many small watercourses on and around the giant. In summary, geology tells us that the development activities proposed for this site could adversely affect the watercourses, wetlands, and their upland review areas. Just as town planners have been saying over and over, we urge the commission to uphold precedent and continue to preserve these areas of the site from potential unreasonable pollution, impairment, and destruction. And I'd like to add too, that I'm concerned about the inland wetlands' ability to evaluate tonight the potential for unreasonable pollution, impairment, and destruction of these wetlands and watercourses, given the fact that development plans and activities submitted to you presently require substantial modification in scope and content and may well require the same in the future. Our final remarks concern soil and wetland scientists. We thank Kristin O'Neill of the Water Course and Wetlands Division of the Deep for patiently answering our many questions. I am now pleased to introduce Michelle Ford, founder of Echo Maps LLC. She is a registered professional soil scientist, professional wetland scientist, and certified wildlife biologist with decades of municipal and consulting experience in Connecticut, including five years as the zoning and wetlands enforcement officer in Middletown. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Hello, members of the commission. I'm not going to sit here and read to you my whole report. You have that in your packet. I was retained by the Save Mansion Creek organization to review the information submitted by the applicant as well as their soil scientist, Mr. George Logan. And so as you'll see in my document that I have here, I listed for you the concerns and what I was concerned with. And the first, and what seems to be the largest concern is over the intermittent water course, which drains from Mansion Creek, or drains from the road down to Mansion Creek. I did not have access to the property. I have not evaluated that intermittent water course drainage swale. Personally, it was all from public rights of way. My concern, as it was stated here, was in the lack of data to make that determination, to change that from a regulated intermittent water course to a drainage swale to be allowed to be filled and piped. And so as I went through, just seeing that Mr. Logan did not appear to include actual data to make that determination. So that was the first and most significant concern. The second concern, the removal of mature trees from atop the slope, right with the root stability. As you'll see, that slope on the back of the property down toward Mansion Creek is already starting to erode. I believe the applicant has changed that and they don't plan to remove any of those trees. So that is good. The other concern that I have is... The other concern that I have is, you know, should the intermittent water course drainage swale be allowed to be filled, is how that scour basin, that pond will be cleaned out and maintained? You know, over the years, if it's going to be piped from Mansion Road, it's going to accumulate sediment, right? I'm not talking about the big debris, the Dunkin' Donuts coffee cups or anything like that. I'm talking about the sand and the silt that's going to slowly infill that basin. And if there isn't a rigid maintenance schedule to extract that fine material, it's going to fill in, and any benefit of it is going to be null and void. So that was my other concern. I was emailed today a copy of Mr. McManus's report at about 5:00. So I didn't have a ton of time to go through it. It says it was received by the town today. I'm assuming, members of the commission, you've reviewed it. I don't have any objection to what was written in Mr. McManus's report. I appreciate that the applicant went and got another soil scientist and gathered more data and more opinions. I still think there are a few questions as to whether or not it is a regulated intermittent water course. One point that Mr. McManus makes here on page one is additional time would be needed to indicate, quote, "the presence of standing or flowing water for the duration longer than a particular storm incident." I think the problem with this whole thing is really the regulation, and it's incredibly vague. You know, duration longer than a storm event, is that .1 inches of rain? Is it 24 hours after? Is it 72 hours? So there's a lot of room for interpretation. And having not been on the site, having not had that time to make those evaluations, I can't speak to it myself.
Now, as an intervenor, you are supposed to have specific reasons or solutions to problems. You have a specific reason why this is going to fail. But take your time.
Sorry. I question the determination that it is not an intermittent water course.
But if that, you question the determination, if this commission felt it was a drainage ditch and not a water course, it's got a hard bottom, it's got some water sitting in rock, that changes the complexity.
This is nice.
No problem. Take your time. Get a swallow. I mean, this commission was out there on site, and at the last meeting, everyone talked and agreed that it was a drainage ditch and not an intermittent water course. To jump back now and say, "Well, that's what Linda Bush said," or Tom Petrus said 20 years ago, they're not here to defend themselves, they're not here to say what they saw. So I think you're an intervenor's status as supposed to pinpoint the pollution problems or the reasons why. Just saying that you don't agree with the determination doesn't quite cut it.
I understand.
You probably could have gone on site. Did you ask them if you could go on site?
There's no trespassing signs everywhere. We were not told we can go on the site.
Did you ask?
There was no trespassing, so why would I ask?
You're right. You're right. You're absolutely correct. Any questions, Caroline, or the intervenor?
You talk about, you show us the pictures of what you saw down there with the eagle edge or the rock or whatever. I believe when Heritage Woods went in, there was a similar scenario back there, and nobody wanted to build back there, and all of a sudden Heritage Woods was built. I think you're sitting on the same geographic plot that this property has. And over the years of development, this 20-foot or 50-foot ravine that has eroded has been probably the first 60 or 80 years of development before the '60s. Now that we keep developing and putting housing projects in, and we've got retention everywhere, the impact, it's not an intermittent stream, it's just drainage, it's water runoff from up above. Because as you climb up Mansion Road, you can see all the water's going to run downhill. Eventually, it's going to run through Heritage Woods, or it's going to come down the street and get into the storm sewer. So I think we've placed it where it should be placed as far as, it's not an intermittent stream, it's a drainage ditch. And the water comes down through there and barrels across the street to Winnipeg River. So I don't...
Water has run during dry times down there. We've seen it. We've got videos of it.
But you just said it. The rock has all been fractured, and it's cracked, and the water runs down into the rock. It's got to leak somewhere. It's found its course to, you know, it's going to flow downhill. So it's going to eventually get down to the lowest point of the area.
Well, how could you deem something that forever has been considered an intermittent water course, and all of a sudden say it's not anymore? I mean, what proof do we have that it's not, except for everyone to say, "It's a ditch, it's a ditch"?
What proof do you have that it is?
Reports from the history.
Yeah, but things change in time, and I think that's something that's being ignored in a lot of the discussions here. One of the things that proves intermittent streams is they're very, very associated with seasonal fluctuations of water tables. In the springtime, after the snow melts, it can't get down into the water table right away, so it's suspended with the snow melt, and that's when you will find areas like what has developed in this area, flows of water. They are seasonable when the table comes up. And so you can't really associate it with a given storm event. A series of storm events can change water tables and reactivate intermittent streams. The same kind of conditions exist with what are known as vernal ponds. They're seasonal, and it has everything to do with snow melt, the amount of rainfall, and the subsequent water tables, which can fluctuate up and down, up to 20 feet in some areas. I'm not saying it would happen here. What disturbed me in this whole project, in the very beginning, our site investigation was not what it should have been. We were not really able to get down in and spend the time necessary to do what had to be done because of hostilities that were popping up and arising with comments. And so it was called off. That was very unfortunate. But getting back to what is salient and important to what we are dealing with here, the intermittence and whether or not this is an intermittent stream, and history that changes things. I went back afterward and says, "Okay, huge ravine here. What is it like on the other side of Mansion Road to the south?" Couldn't find it. Over the time since Linda Bush was here, I think a lot of development has gone on, and a lot of things have been filled in. And the only thing that I really see entering that system today is the road water, which can sit in that ravine because it can't get down through the bedrock that it has worn down to, so it sits there. You showed a picture of a stream along with basalt outcrops. It was moving water. That's a stream, moving. When it just sits, and you can go and see it week after week in an area that doesn't get a lot of sunlight yet, it sits there and creates wetland-type soils. But is it really a stream? Where's the connection? Where's the water coming from that causes the intermittence here? There could be a little with springtime melts, but during the peak of a summer without storm events, I don't see it happening. So from my experience and understanding of how environmental systems work, I think this ditch area was cut off from its sources many years ago, perhaps even before the development of Heritage, which certainly had an effect on the sediments that went downstream from there during its development. So again, I don't see this as an active area supporting the wetlands, but I am concerned about the development here and how to best protect the wetlands. And hopefully, we'll get into that with a little bit more clarity on construction sequence. That's all.
Thanks, Jim. Jeff?
No comments.
Mike?
No comments.
Evan?
No comment.
You know, the water, it rains, it runs in the ground. That area all through there is very sandy. So no matter where the water rained in your yard, the water would go in your lawn, go down there, and eventually, it's got to migrate somewhere, and it migrates to the primary creek, not the lateral. So for it to leak out at that point, it could easily leak out to the north. This leaks out to the east. So that's the more, that's kind of the normal flow of what goes on. We recharge, we take projects and we recharge groundwater. Well, it goes down to bedrock, and that's where that whole drainage that sits on top of bedrock. I think that's where this whole thing, some of it, gets to be discussed. Because it's when, I didn't see any vegetation in the middle of that drainage swale.
There was. There was. It's written in Mr. Logan's report as well.
All right. Does the applicant have any questions of the intervenor? Okay. I don't think, I think he's tied up right now. Do you have any questions of the intervenor? Any comments? Attorney Sandoviva?
No.
Okay, thanks. Okay. All right. We wanted to hear from Chris Giuliano regarding the construction sequence that's going Okay, Chris, we've had a very specific question from Commissioner Heilmann regarding the construction So the question is?
The construction of the pipe in the drainage ditch sequence, starting, finishing?
If I could, you seen, I brought this up. Chris, my concern has to do with the protection of what is at the lowest point, which is really where the wetlands are and leaving the site. And during the discussions that preceded this evening, I had thought that you had had the idea of putting in the main dam first, but that's kind of got reversed to putting in check dams. And my concern was that, my greatest concern is what's down below, and the first line of defense is to protect that. So I'm trying to jump between the two scenarios here. Personally, I think that would be your first line of defense, followed by the check dams, and then you start the activity. So if you could, in that line of thought, proceed.
Okay. What you described, Mr. Heilmann, is pretty much what is on our sequence of construction. There has been some discussion from the environmental planner's office, and I think that's what some of the confusion is, because it kind of flipped it all on its head. So let me run through it. Basically, we are going to come down, we are going to, we are going to mark the clearing. That's our first step. We are going to cut trees without the removal of any stumps, just to get that out of our way. We are going to install our silt fence at the downstream side. So we have our perimeter silt fence, we have three additional silt fences below, just up slope of that. So we have basically four rows of silt fence to protect that critical area at the downstream side of our activities. Next, we will install the scour hole. So we'll put in the riprap, we'll put that in, we'll lay in the flared end section and about 40 feet of pipe. And the reason why I select 40 feet of pipe, plastic pipe comes in 20-foot sections, and it gets us far enough beyond this wall so we can then start installing that wall approximately three blocks high with the backfill of stone and some dirt. We'll then put a temporary silt fence there as well, and that is basically to hold all this in place. From that point on, we will start working back with pipe and fill until we get to this proposed manhole and the existing outlet. And as we keep moving back, as we get higher, we will start continuing to add to that wall and backfilling it, always having that wall in place above our fill. So if, God forbid, there's a freak storm while the work is going on, we have a line of defense of this wall, temporary silt fence, before it can get by and get to our scour hole, and then the three rows of silt fence beyond. We also have agreed to put Erosion Control blankets on the dis served soil here. Again, that would be buttons on belt and suspenders. And once we get this connected, we rough grade it, we can then deal with the seeding and everything else. The check dams do come after, and they would basically be if we, as we're going through and we need to stop work, we put those check dams in, again, buttons on top of the belt and suspenders. But we start at the low end, we work our way up, which is the way construction should be done for storm drainage in this manner.
That made sense to me.
Okay. That was all. Thank you. You're welcome. Sorry.
Thank you for the question.
Chris, what's the timeframe for this?
At last month's meeting, I basically said from start to finish, I figured about a week just to deal with trees, clearing, and all this. And I think it might have been the chairman who thought it could even be done quicker. And it may. With a good contractor, they can probably get 130 feet of pipe in and rough grade it in under a week. But I conservatively said a week. And that's why we've agreed that we have to look at a long-range forecast and make sure we don't have rain events, so we get at least seven days of dry weather to do this work. That's one of the conditions that we agreed to, that we will look for that dry weather
Jeff? Questions?
No questions.
Mike?
No questions.
No questions.
Ally?
No.
Caroline?
No, thank you.
All right. I don't know if we have any other questions. Commissioner has any other questions for Chris? Any other questions for the applicant? This is not really a public hearing, but it's a meeting that you have an intervenor, which gives you very similar to a public hearing. But I will take some comments from the public if they want to. If you do, it's strictly wetlands and name and address for the record. Have you seen there is none?
Oh, no. I'm Representative Mary Maschinsky. I live at 188 South Cherry Street in Wallingford. And in my other job, I work on watershed protection. I did go to the site today, not in the site, because there's no trespassing signs all over it, but I did stand where I could, take telephoto pictures, listen to the streams. And there is a, as you have said, there's a steep ravine, which has a pretty substantial stream in it, and it's similar in size to the Allen Brook Ravine on the other side of town that flows into Wharton Brook State Park. And I understand the applicant is not going to touch that. There's a more shallow ravine that faces, that comes to Mansion Road, and that was flowing today as a stream. The last time we had rain, I think, was Saturday. If it was a ditch, it would not be flowing today, because today is Wednesday. This is obviously, to me, a very, it's small, but it is, to me, a stream. It flows. Today is the only day I was actually there, so I can only talk about today. I did want to tell the commission that there are existing runoff and erosion problems at Barrel Drive, which is near Oakdale on the backside. It's a very similar ravine to this one, and similar problems at Barrel... It's a very similar ravine to this one, and similar problems at Barrel Drive. Constituents have asked me to go in there and look at it, at the erosion. The town engineer was asked to look at it. And we have to be careful we don't replicate the same mistakes that were made there, which caused chronic problems for those residents at Barrel Drive.
You know what the mistakes were?
Well, probably development close to the stream, removal of the vegetation that holds the ravine soils in place, not enough retention of water up slope. You know, there are probably historically a lot of mistakes there. And I just see that that's a chronic problem, and I'm just encouraging the commission not to repeat that in this new location with a very similar ravine. The other thing I wanted to mention is on, and I don't know if it's your purview or planning and zonings, but the proposed use, there's one other site that I see regularly when I do water monitoring, and that is the food truck site at Long Wharf. I go there and do sampling for my other job. And that is a chronic debris all over the place surrounding the food trucks. It blows around, it gets in the water, it's a real mess. And even after you do a beach cleanup at the site in Long Wharf, problem comes back immediately the next day, and it's a chronic debris problem. And when I look at that site, I would say that there's not enough trash receptacles, and they're not emptied enough, and there aren't enough for the number of food trucks. So if that's in your purview, to require trash receptacles and keeping the debris from leaving the site by wind or by water, I hope you will add that. If it's planning and zoning, I'll ask them to add it. And then finally, there's basalt on the property, there's a basalt ridge, probably a continuation of the one that makes up Sleeping Giant. I did pick up a chunk of it on the side of the road. I can't go on the property, as I said. But if the applicant is planning to touch the basalt, I don't know how that would be done other than blasting. We, at one time constituents asked me to see if we could smooth out the intersection of Mansion and Hartford Turnpike so they could have visibility, because when they pull out of Mansion, it's very hard to see the traffic. And so they said, can you get Department of Transportation to shave off that corner? And the answer was no because of the basalt. So I'm just asking the question if there are plans to be any blasting there.
I don't think that's in our jurisdiction.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know if the debris is either, but I'm bringing it up because I'm hoping that one of the commissions will address it. And thanks for, thanks for your attention.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioners, are we ready to act on this application? What does that mean, Erin?
That, as I said before, I think Mr. Giuliano, who wasn't here before, I don't think, when we were talking about condition number three, because the sequence, construction sequence, he went through in answer to Commissioner Heilmann's question, doesn't comport with condition number three. So if we approve condition number three, it's not what he's going to want, and it's not represented in the site plan right now. So, and that's, this, the reason it's, we were going to talk about it last week, and that never happened. So we're here, and they agreed to condition number three, but maybe they want to change that now, or do you want to go ahead with the way I worded condition number three?
That's why I wanted the discussion on it, to clarify that. Whether we follow the plan that was proposed, or we do an alternate to that, start at the top and work down versus the bottom up. As such, maybe you could, I like the idea of starting at the bottom to protect what's most important and work your way up, but I'm very open to some ideas and concepts of how it might work otherwise.
Well, I was probably the one that led that charge last meeting.
That's fine.
And I felt that you connect to the pipe in Mansion Road, and the outlet is in the main brook. So none of that area in the middle is affected by the next rainfall. Get it in, you can bring your dam up, you can use, and even if it's going to be recessed, if you want to try to use it as retention area, it can, for that general small area there. But at least the water quality will be identical from Mansion Road 130 feet later. It'll be, it'll be in and done, and the water will get to where it's going. But they, I was told that, and I, and I don't have a P E stamp behind my name, so I got out rules, which is okay. They're, they're the ones, they're bonding it, they're doing it. But you have to either, we have to either modify condition three or eliminate condition three.
Hi, Mike, Mr. Chairman. I think, again, condition number three, my client agreed to it. The condition has, is its caveat at the bottom, that the condition needs to be discussed, evaluated, reworked, and finalized per issues raised above. And so that's what I think Commissioner Heilmann has raised the question appropriately. That was the response from Mr. Giuliano. And so, yeah, we would endorse either methodology, whichever one the commission thinks is prudent to start, as suggested in the language in number three, or as presented by our engineer. Either, it clearly works, there's benefits to both, but it seems as if the gentleman with a P wants it to be the other methodology.
Well, your construction sequence, is it on the maps?
Yes, on the erosion control sheet, upper left corner, it's on.
On the maps.
It's on the maps.
So if we approve the plan, your construction sequence follows with what Jimmy's looking at. Right, Jim?
Yeah. And the engineered one.
So I think the easiest thing then, unless commissioners have got another opinion, is just to eliminate condition three under approvals, condition of approvals. Okay? Is that acceptable?
Yep.
All right. We already determined significant activity, and I think I'm prepared for a motion to approve or deny this application.
Close at first.
I'm going to ask who the voters are going to be.
I'm sorry?
I'm going to ask, Chairman, who the voters are going to be considering.
The voters are going to be Nick Kern, Debbie, Mike, Jeff, and myself.
I have to question because Mr. Heilmann participated on voting last time.
Then, then the question is, does Mike feel comfortable with reading the minutes that he can vote on this application?
Yes.
No, no, it's, it's a valid point, but I think that the voting commissioners have the right, if they feel comfortable, they can act upon it. I think that we determined that at a previous meeting.
Do you have to close the?
I'm sorry?
You have to close the thing before you go into the final?
Remember, it's not a public hearing.
That's right. You're right. You're right.
I think we can continue. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny this application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A 23-5.5, Ten Mansion Road, Joe Flamini, Lost and Found Ventures, Commercial Development Restaurant, be approved with the conditions that are outlined in the Environmental Planner's report of September 29th, 2023, excluding the condition of number three.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Offer a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
Barrel Drive, I don't know where it is, Barrel Drive?
Hi.
It's all for her constituents.
When you gave the information, it's like 1,083.1. Seriously? Seriously? How about plus or minus 10?
Yeah, on that sand flat. Okay.
Chuckled when I looked at that.
All right, we're still in a meeting. All right. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so I think, all right, you've got a new application from In Memoriam. Okay. We've got a new application from In Memoriam Cemetery. That's, they made some changes, they were having a failure there. On our, on our list, Barnes Road Modification Permits Taking Care of North Main Street Implementation. Are we down? Are you, are you folks from Quigley Road? All right. Notice of violation remains on Old Colony, that hasn't changed. You know, I think it's time to get a notice on the land records of that violation, or is it already?
No, not for that one.
All right, that should be on the land records. Quinnipiac, is a pallet pile going down?
Do you want to vote on that one?
Well, there's more than one, I think.
Well, they should, it's so serious, maybe one by, the ones that you really want to put that notice on the land records should be done.
Individually?
Yes.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to put this violation on the land records of 1245 Old Colony.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the notice of violation on 1245 Old Colony Road and Quinnipiac River, Jersey Patel, be placed on the land records.
Okay, motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Jeff? Offer a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Cease and desist on 67 Schoolhouse. You've had some correspondence with an attorney that thinks we should be chasing little Ks?
Yeah, non-correspondence. She came into the office, yes.
Well, that's correspondence, I think.
Okay.
So I, that's not going to happen. I mean, you can do anything you want, but they're not the owner of the property. But the fact that 67, Grace, they, there was a deadline, oh, no, next month.
Next month.
Okay, next month. Okay. This may be a candidate for being on the land records also, only because she's the one that said when we bought our house, there was no record of any violations.
Yep.
Okay.
Do you want to vote on that, to put it on there?
Not yet. They have until November 1st.
Okay.
To do something. So we'll see what happens. Okay, Patricia Clark, she has just refused everything, correct? She's not willing, she's, she's off in her orbit.
She runs hot and cold.
Runs hot and cold. Okay. But the violation, alteration in filling within wetlands and upland review area on 24 Maple View, that's her property, correct? And 13, 13 Rolling Meadow is the adjoining property.
Yeah, most of the, most of this violation of wetlands is, she did on someone else's property. That would be 13, that would be 13 Rolling Meadow.
All right.
The marsh, the marsh.
I, I think there should be something on the land records regarding this whole episode on that site. That the states in the land records, that, does she have a violation? Is it potential? I think she filled a wetland up in that corner where the water comes across from, from Rolling Meadow. But this thing is just going to go on forever, this thing, with this person. So there ought to be some closure to it. Maybe when you're talking to Janice, she'll have some idea regarding that, how to put some kind of closure. Because has she cleaned up the, the, what she did on 13 Rolling Meadow?
Most of it, most of it.
Most of it, see?
Bird bath and so on. She didn't put the plants in, but you, you, there is something that she was suggesting, since we last talked about it, that I thought was a good idea. She came up with it. She said, you know, the pipe going over that we discussed, that away is not going to work because it's going to hit my sewer line. She has a sewer grinder pump, so she's afraid, no matter what they do, they're going to hit, she doesn't want them endangering that sewer line. So she said, why don't they just do a rock swale, a rocks, a big rocks riprap swale from Tim Clark's property, which is up above with the pool, down across her corner into, toward the marsh? I said, that's a great idea. And she said, but he's got to pay for it and put it in. I'm not doing a thing. And there would have to be an easement, you know, just a drainage easement. And that was her last suggestion. And this came, maybe she sent videos to the mayor.
Yeah, but regardless of that.
But, I mean, it really does come down to that target.
Regardless of that, it's been going through there for the last 100 years, that area. The question is, this is her idea, how does she stand now? Did anybody approach Tim Clark and say, do you want to put a drainage swale across?
No.
Well, then what, then what good was her idea if she's not allowing Clark to do it?
It's just, yes, we could, we could follow that. It involves a lot of steps. She's got to literally agree to have people on her property doing this work. It's like a lot of different steps.
It doesn't make any difference. Is she willing to allow Clark to put a drainage?
Good question. As they say, she waxes hot and cold. I will check in with her this month.
Check in with her because she changes all the time.
Yes.
Hammerack Swamp, you said that's moving along fairly well?
Yes. He's still working with Roman. We were supposed to go see it last week, that didn't happen, but with the rain, you know, I, I'll go see it this week to see how it has endured all that rain.
119 Quigley Road, Matt Turner. We gave this person approval to do some clear cutting in his backyard, and according to Erin, the gentleman went over and above what he was permitted to do. And I think she gave us the pictures and the violation of it. Bringing him in here isn't going to do anything more than you working with him to get this thing resolved.
Yeah, he's cooperating, he's already put in the hay bales. And can I just say that it's not clear cutting? No, 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 not clear cutting. He didn't take any trees down, except maybe sap, little spindly saplings, but no, it's bushes that, again, I will tell everybody, don't let a contractor do work if you're not home, please. No, you got to be home, you got to watch the contractor.
Okay, so you're handling this, which it should, would be the same if he was before us anyway. All right? Anything else to come before us tonight? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Got to be, it's Tuesday, it's got to be the first, right?
No kidding?
November, November 1st is the?